My name is Judy Guyen-utzler. I'm the university chaplain here at Otterbein University. I am a United Methodist elder. I was ordained an elder in 1995. I am joined today by my colleague Anna Giozy, almost Reverend Doctor.
Reverend almost doctor.
That's what I should have said. Reverend almost doctor. She is the senior pastor at Church of the Master United Methodist Church. She is here in part because she is a self-proclaimed policy wonk. She told me I could call her that. She is also here because she was at the General Conference as a reserve delegate, like third-tier reserve delegate, something like that. At any rate, she has the insight, the interest in policy specifics. And while I am seeing myself as being more reactionary to this conference because it has affected me more than I thought it would, Anna is steadier and more logical than I am. So she is here to kind of help me through this. Fair?
Yeah, now I'm logical and steady.
Okay. We'll take what we can get. So the General Conference was a special General Conference called after the 2016 General Conference when it was clear that the issue regarding homosexuality was becoming more and more divisive and was leading us more and more to a path of real schism. The bishops were asked to lead us. They formed a commission. The commission looked at several plans and they called this special session of General Conference that was held this past February. There were three plans put forth by the commission, by the special commission, and not all of them got much of hearing or a vote. There were 864 delegates that were certified. Delegates represented the United States, several countries in Africa, the Philippines, several countries in Europe, and Eurasia. And if anybody really wants to know the final breakout of all of that, I am happy to get you that information. I thought that might be going too far in the weeds for today. So I want to talk just a little bit about what was decided at General Conference. There were, how many petitions total brought? Was it 86? Or I think something like 86 petitions for the delegates to consider at this very short General Conference. So one of the first things that happened was that they decided which order they were going to receive and hear the petitions. They started with a plan for implementation of what was decided at General Conference. And then because central conferences, which are those conferences outside the United States, are allowed to adapt the Book of Discipline to their needs, they were given additional time to implement changes. The first decision was around pension. I'm going to let Anna talk a little bit about the pension issue. It just comes down to the fact that churches will be required to keep the promises that have been made to our retired clergy.
Yes, like Judy mentioned, the pension legislations took a very clear top priority as far as what the body wanted to work on first. Some of the rhetoric has become like, oh, they're just money grubbing clergy who only care about their retirement. Well, I mean, kind of, yes. Like, I would really like to have a pension. But it also comes down to matters of if a pastor decides to leave, what happens to their pension? If they decide to leave but are brought up on charges, what happens to their pension? So when we say pension, it's more than just cash in the bank. It's got concrete ramifications. But like Judy mentioned, this begins to touch on issues of if a church leaves because if, hypothetically, if the congregation I serve decided to leave, the United Methodist Church, it has promises made to the clergy who have served there for their retirement. And so essentially, there is introduced a formula to make sure that if a congregation leaves, that their unfunded pension liabilities are fulfilled. And there's a few other factors in that formula. But as it stands now, and even after January 1st, if everything goes through Judicial Council, it doesn't really matter if a pastor chooses to leave the denomination or if a pastor has her credentials revoked. It's still, the same thing happens to their pensions, mostly.
The next thing that was on the agenda was about the traditional plan. So that was how the delegates voted to review petitions. And the fact that the traditional plan was voted to be the first of the plans was clearly an indication about the will of that body. The traditional plan passed with 453 yes votes and 384 no votes. That's 53% to 47%. This is another area that I want Anna to talk about because she explained something to me that I hadn't understood. There were 17 petitions that were part of the traditional plan, and the delegates voted as a body to receive all 17 of these petitions as a single piece of legislation. And some of these petitions were already ruled unconstitutional before General Conference began.
Yeah. No, I can hold it. That way I can walk. Preacher stroll. It is very typical within the way that a General Conference works to bundle, like petitions, together. So the hypothetical I give people is carpet color. So like if in legislative subcommittees, there are 18 petitions about carpet color, you could put all the carpet color petitions together and only vote on carpet color once, instead of having to go through 18 times in legislative committee and then 18 times on the floor. So while there is only one traditional plan that was proposed by the commission on the Way Forward, it had an additional group of petitions that were added to it to vote as a bundle. Now, it might sound like legislative process that's boring, but the reason this becomes important is because you vote on them all together in one group. We're unsure now because the petition has been referred to Judicial Counsel if Judicial Counsel then also has to rule on the whole of the grouping. Because if that is the case and Judicial Counsel simply decides yes or no to uphold the work of the body or to rule the whole thing unconstitutional, many people suspect there will be too many flaws for the Judicial Counsel to be able to support the constitutionality of this work. And when I say constitutionality, I mean the United Methodist Constitution. So we're unsure yet whether the Judicial Counsel can simply take out the pieces that they believe to be unconstitutional. If they do that, then we likely have a structure of polity pretty similar to what we have now with some standardized penalties put in place as far as actions of clergy around people who are LGBTQ.
And I can be a little bit more specific about some of that. So the Judicial Counsel meets, interestingly enough, right before our Board of Trustees meets the next time. There was also a plan for disaffiliation that was the next thing to be voted on at the General Conference. And there's some question about the constitutionality of this plan as well. So at this point, if a local church wants to disaffiliate over matters of human sexuality, they will have a process to follow and have a deadline to follow that process. But the petition did not include the requirement of a two-thirds majority vote for the annual conference, which is generally required for anything this massive. So this one also may be thrown out unless you have a correction to that. I think I got that one right.
I have one clarifying.
Sure.
When we say that Judicial Counsel has already made rulings, I gave Judy this analogy when we were talking in my office. Think about it like, you know, the city of Westerville is talking about putting a stop sign at an intersection. Everybody knows that there's going to be a stop sign at the intersection, but it's not there yet. So you roll through that intersection, the police officers can't give you a ticket because there's not a stop sign yet. So the body kept asking the Judicial Counsel for these rulings, and they were consulting, basically, to say, we believe that this will be unconstitutional, but until the General Conference has a whole voted on it, the Judicial Counsel can't do anything, which is why nothing is done until after the meeting that Judy just referenced.
All right. So as I said, what all of this means, pensions are protected for retired clergy. There's a way for clergy who leave or disaffiliate to keep their pension. The traditional plan, and this is where it becomes really important for Otterbein and for the alignment with our own values of inclusion and diversity. The traditional plan, as it stands right now, reinforces the Book of Discipline language that excludes LGBTQIA persons from ordination, and it forbids clergy from officiating at same-gender weddings. It forbids bishops from consecrating, commissioning, or ordaining people who are self-avowed homosexuals, and it doesn't add the language or didn't keep the language, self-avowed practicing. So even those who are self-avowed queer clergy who are not practicing or celibate are not welcome to be commissioned or ordained. Excuse me?
Help us all.
Also, you'll note there are some post-its on the table. You are welcome to ask some questions and just stick them at the ends of the table if you have them, and we'll have a chance to entertain some of those questions at the end. So the traditional plan also requires bishops to rule a decision of a Board of Ordained Ministry out of order if that board would be to approve a person who is LGBT, self-avowed, whether or not they are practicing. And the bishops have had discretion up until this point about whether or not they will refer a charge to a church trial. This has been taken away now, and they must, they cannot dismiss complaints unless they are totally without merit. Just resolution means that the person who files the complaint has to be part of the process and must agree to the resolution. So you can see already, there's quite a potential for an increase in the vitriol, if that is even possible. In effect, the decision to affirm the traditional plan continues to treat LGBTQIA-plus persons in the United Methodist Church as second-class citizens without full rights or privileges that should be given to them at their baptism. There is a bit more information. At General Conference, there were accusations of selling or buying votes. There was some evidence of this. The decision went to the body, and they narrowly decided to approve an ethics investigation, and this is ongoing. And since the time of General Conference, some of the credentials of some of those who voted have been called into question. There are some specific charges that have been made. So the Commission on General Conference is investigating that. And I don't know exactly what it means, if they find out that indeed there were people buying or selling votes, and if somebody indeed came in and voted who was not credentialed to do so. I don't know if it means that they slap somebody on the wrist and say, that was a bad thing, you shouldn't have done that, or if it goes to the other extreme where they might call into question the entire body of decisions made at this General Conference. Do you have any?
Nope, none of us know.
None of us know?
Yeah.
So we have had some things been going on since then, and I've been trying to stay up to date on all of this. I am sure that I am, at this point, missing some of the responses. But there have been several that have been made by various affiliations and parts of the church. So the Western jurisdiction of the United States, which is from Colorado all the way to California, north as far as Washington, and I forget how far south, it goes probably around Nevada, has pledged to continue to be an inclusive jurisdiction. They have pledged to bring in any clergy who feel that they cannot serve in their current appointments. They will take them in and protect them, essentially. They will protect clergy who feel like they need to celebrate weddings for same-gender couples. There are several central conferences who have made it very clear that they will not adhere to the traditional plan, including statements from Norway, Germany, and Denmark. These are all available online, and if anybody wants links to these, I'm happy to pass them to you. It's the same general tone. We do not find this traditional plan to be ethical, to follow Wesley's First Rule, to do no harm. Therefore, we will not adhere to this. So if I had been afraid of schism kind of walking into this General Conference, now I'm beginning to see it happening as conferences and churches and jurisdictions begin to make it plain that they're not going to follow these rules. There are also organizations within the connection that have issued statements. So on the floor of conference, the delegates were handed, or not physically handed, but were given information that there were 15,000 signatures from youth and young adult clergy and lay from around the connection urging them not to vote for the traditional plan. The United Methodist Women, which is a really powerful organization within the denomination, has also come out with a statement against the traditional plan. And Korean United Methodists, we have a large population of Korean United Methodists in this country that also put out a declaration that they are opposed to the rules of the traditional plan. And then there are a number of annual conferences that have written responses. These are not voted on by an annual conference. This is not the, everybody in the annual conference got together and decided to put out this statement. These are more of the statements that are coming from clergy who want to sign them. So Texas Annual Conference from Houston, the Desert Southwest Methodist, Minnesota, Memphis, Virginia, Missouri, Wisconsin, Iowa, and this morning, West Ohio, which is our annual conference, have statements for clergy to sign, or some of them for clergy and lay to sign, saying that they do not agree with the decision made by General Conference. And many of these statements also saying, we will not abide by these decisions.
I also heard that during conference that all of the seminaries, United Methodist Affiliated Seminaries opposed this.
All of the seminaries?
All but one.
Asbury, but it's not affiliated.
It's not affiliated.
It's Senate accredited, so they were very clear that they were in opposition. Yeah.
I also heard that the Board of Ordained Ministry of the Michigan Conference will not follow the rules.
As I said, I'm sure I'm missing some because these are now coming out almost daily. I'm Facebook friends now with a man named Dave Knuckles, who was actually on the Commission on the Way Forward. He came to our annual conference to talk about what was happening. He was very ill when he went to General Conference as a delegate this year and still managed to stay on top of things. He is posting almost on a daily basis the new petitions, statements, letters that are coming out from various annual conferences around the connection. But you're right about boards or seminaries. Also, I think, John, didn't all of the presidents of United Methodist-affiliated universities also sign a document urging them? This was before General Conference.
All of the presidents were leaving in January, which is 40 or 50.
Do you know how many there would have been if they'd all been present?
I want to say 80, something like that.
So a fairly significant number of presidents of United Methodist-affiliated colleges and universities have also signed, saying this is not, this is not congruent with our values as institutions of higher education. Do you have another, yeah, question?
What's the best website to try to track what's happening?
You can go to...
I have an answer.
Oh, good.
There's a blogger by the name of Jeremy Smith, and I'll give the disclaimer that Jeremy is explicitly progressive. So you should know, if you visit the website I'm about to share, you're getting a biased perspective as far as his commentary is concerned. But he's keeping on his blog a list, and that, the blog is Hacking, like H-A-C-K-I-N-G, hacking Christianity. So Google search hacking Christianity blog, and that'll be the first hit. And he tends to keep that post pinned pretty high.
Is his name really Jeremy Smith?
Yeah, truly.
Yeah, happens to be my name.
There are actually two Jeremy Smith clergy that are pretty well-known in our denomination, and even the bishops confuse them. And they were both at General Conference and were like, it's Methodist Bizarro World, like a chasm is going to open up.
That's what we're seeing happening right now. Our Board of Trustees, oh, and this is about all of the five UMC-affiliated universities at this point. Every one of them is struggling in some way with this question of affiliation. I met with chaplains last December, and already discussions were beginning to happen about our values as universities. All of these universities are really committed to inclusion and diversity and wanting to make sure that students who come here recognize that they are welcome, precious, beloved, important to us as institutions. And the language that the United Methodist Church has had and now has resolved to continue is not in line with our values of inclusion and equity. So I think all of the universities are struggling with this. What do we do? I think it's harder for some than others. Ohio Northern actually has some of their property that's still owned by West Ohio Annual Conference, and that makes a split much, much more difficult. They can't disaffiliate quite so easily. Baldwin Wallace, Ohio Wesleyan, Otterbein, and Mount Union are all, have less of that kind of connection. So all of them are looking at ways to either continue an affiliation along with some dissent or to have trustees vote about disaffiliating. Baldwin Wallace had a newspaper in, or, I need to calm down now. Okay, I'm going to try this again, see if I can get a sentence out that makes sense. The Baldwin Wallace newspaper is called The Exponent, and they had an article last week that was, that widely quoted their president and their chaplain. They're making it fairly clear that they are moving toward disaffiliation. And as John said, kind of threw us under the bus. Our board will be meeting in April. It is after the Judicial Counsel has met. Hopefully, there will be a ruling. I don't know that Judicial Counsel comes out with a ruling in public the same week they meet. So there may be, we may not have all of the information yet. But then the heartening thing is that our Board of Trustees at their meeting in February voted to affirm our values of inclusion and welcome. So it's clear where we stand. The question is, can we stand with the United Methodist Church? Any questions that people have at this point that they want to fill out, write something on a post-it, pass it in?
My understanding is, oh, this has been in the Book of Discipline for decades, but my understanding was that it had the language about practicing. And so it's actually become harsh. Is that my remembering right or not?
So the language, I don't remember the exact year because, full disclosure, it was before I was born, was added to the Book of Discipline in the '70s?
'72.
'72, thank you. Still before I was born.
I was eight.
There is, so any grammar nerds in the room? Okay, so there's a comma that became a really powerful comma because as our discipline stands now, one must be, in order to be in violation of our discipline, one must be self-avowed and practicing. If you would change punctuation, then it might become self-avowed comma practicing. So either/or, whatever that means, like, I just think those terms are hysterical. Like, what does practicing mean? That's conversation for cocktails, not...
When you get your gay agenda, like, they hand it to you.
Anyway. So yes, the language is, it's not longstanding as far as church...
What you're referring to, what, has been just voted on?
It's been affirmed and strengthened.
And so how is it strengthened?
Okay, so in order to be self-avowed pre-special session, that really means that you have to have come out in one of any official places, to your district committee of ordained ministry, your Board of Ordained Ministry, your district superintendent, your bishop. So, you know, you could be French kissing your same-gender spouse in the middle of a pride parade. That's not technically being out now. If everything sticks after this, then that counts. Like, any reasonable public affirmation of homosexuality is now not only chargeable but has also added, and this is going to be unconstitutional, I'm confident, also gives an onus on clergy to report one another. So I go to the pride parade just to witness, and, you know, I see a colleague marching with his husband, holding hands. I not only assume that he's gay, but now I am mandated to report him, essentially. And so it's like turning the clergy in on each other as the gay police. And it means at Boards of Ordained Ministry, we can no longer say, well, you know, he didn't say anything about his husband, so we can't assume that he is gay. Now we have to say like, oh, I was in seminary with him, and he talked about going to the gay bars. Like, now we can assume, it becomes a witch hunt, essentially. But I'm fairly confident that that piece is going to be ruled unconstitutional.
I belong to a Facebook group, another Facebook group of clergy women. I belong to a clergy group on Facebook, including a woman who was being interviewed for, oh, provisional elder status, which is the time before ordained as an elder. It's a probationary status. And she was asked by her Board of Ordained Ministry if she was lesbian because she's So already, there is this sort of extra inquisitiveness that is not about self-avowed, not about self-proclamation, but about suspicion that is beginning to happen. At least, this is something that's coming around. I want to hand this question to Anna.
If you could write it down for me. So the question is, do the percentages reflect the same proportion of churches and congregations? What is the breakdown geographically? Number of delegates are proportional if everybody shows up. But there are issues with visas for delegates. You know, we have, we have always held General Conference in the United States. What that means for many delegates is that obtaining a visa to travel is challenging, especially for clergy who, technically, this is work. It becomes hairy for them because when they're coming from another country, what, they can't just say they're traveling for vacation, because they're not. But if they're traveling for work, then it puts them in visa loopholes. But this is where the Ethics Commission is going to become important because there are things like, you know, churches in the United States who will say, if you can guarantee me that you'll be here and vote this way, then we will provide you legal counsel to help push your visa application through.
Yeah.
So the breakdown geographically is, I'd have to look it up, but it's, it's still a pretty US-centric body, I would say. It's about 60% US.
The delegates to General Conference, 58% for this special conference.
Yeah. Is that, did that answer the question?
So can I just?
Yeah.
So if the vote was just in the United States...
The traditional plan would not have passed. No. But voting is secret. I don't need my commentary on that. So technically, there are no records to say that, you know, Pastor Anna voted this way. It's an electronic voting system, so there's some question too about what the system stores, but we're not entirely sure.
And so the people you're representing may never know how important it is.
Correct. But this is where language in our constitution becomes important because people who attend this general conference are not representatives. They are delegates. And so it is clear, at least in, in the language that English speakers use, if I'm elected to the body, I have no obligation to represent the people that I'm serving. They have delegated me. And so I could be serving the most conservative congregation as a pastor that's ever existed, but if I manage to get elected, I can vote however I want to vote and arguably there's no, there's no problem with that. We're not, the, the members there are not representatives.
One question for John before he turns into a pumpkin. Are continued affiliation or disaffiliation the only opportunities or options available to Otterbine's Board of Trustees? Are there other possibilities?
The answer is sure. There are other possibilities. We're seeing some churches, dissent is the word I've seen, where they're sort of filing that we don't agree with this, but we're not going to read them. There's options of, there's still a lot of dust in the air, right? What will Judicial Council do? And will there be a schism? And it's so, what would that look like? And so there's sort of just a wait and see and let this go for a few months and see how it all settles out. And yeah, it's not clear. As long as I'm talking, my share is sort of...
I think the conundrum we face, if I can summarize, is there are coherent reasons to stay and to go, right? The coherent reasons to go are pretty clear. This is way out of line with Otterbine's powers. That not only does it affirm the traditional part of Book of Discipline that, that disallows homosexuality, it doubles down on it. This witch hunt stop and the way that people can be accused, when accused by the Church, there's all this stuff that really makes it worse than what it was.
Yeah.
And that's so out of line with who we are. And we receive no financial support from the church. We don't give any students from the church. The percentage of Methodists on our campus is no higher than the general population, so it's not like that's a draw. And so, and we actually think that being affiliated with the church with this stand, working with mostly 18-year-olds in our recruitment, actually would hurt us, right? I mean, this is not where young people are. And so that would hurt us, in fact. The reasons to stay are, well, it's easier to work for change from within and without, right? There's something about throwing baby out with the bathwater, that there's a lot of good about the church and a lot of good about being affiliated with the church that we don't want to give up on entirely. And there's a lot unknown, that the Methodist Church can look very different in a year and we regret having left if things then change and now we would be a very different-looking church. And so there's a timing thing in there and it's, it's a complex issue.
Anna brought up a really good point when we were talking last week. As I said, perhaps we would disaffiliate with a statement about re-affiliating with a new thing that happens. And she, do you want to share your analogy? Because I thought it was a good one.
Is it appropriate? I'll, I'll, I'll give a warning that this is, it's an intense analogy, so just take that. But, so if you're in, in a marriage and your spouse is an alcoholic and you decide to leave your spouse because of the alcoholism, can you really say to your spouse, I'll come back when you're sober? Because what if your spouse is so different when they're sober that they don't want to be with you? So while it's all well and good to say that we're going to leave and say, we'll come back if, like, you're the ones that left ultimately, so they don't have to take you back. So it's just something to be aware of.
So a lot of these questions have to do with Otterbine's next step. What is the, sticky notes actually stick. What is the nature of Otterbine's affiliation and how would disaffiliation affect us? What would disaffiliation mean for Otterbine? So as President Comerford said, we have no financial ties to the United Methodist Church. They do not support us. West Ohio Annual Conference does not have a Board of Higher Education and Ministry. East Ohio still has that board, but West Ohio does not anymore. And I'm not sure of the, the reason for that. I suspect it has something to do with the cost of health care, that when health care went way up, that they had to readjust budgets to keep our promises to clergy, retired clergy who had health care. And so things were trimmed from the, from the budget, particularly around programming. That's purely speculation. So Otterbine has no financial ties. We don't have any position within the hierarchy or structure of the church. The General Conference does not include a representative from colleges and universities or seminaries. So there's no say in how the church does its work. The bishops, different bishops have different priorities. And so sometimes we have close relationships with a bishop, sometimes we do not. That's not disparaging to the bishop. That's just to say that different bishops are going to have different kinds of things that they focus on. So it's, the relationship is, for Otterbine's point, is that every 10 years, we go through an accreditation process. The United Methodist Church sends representatives. It's very much like our affiliation with, or accreditation through HLC. It's the year after our HLC accreditation so that we can use a lot of the data that we've collected in the reports. They have some additional things that they find. If they accredit us, we show up on a list of accredited United Methodist institutions. And that's really as far as our relationship goes. So it would mean, it wouldn't mean very much to the day-to-day experiences of the students, some of whom don't know that we're affiliated. I mean, it's just, it's not a central part of our identity at this point. That's not to say that an affiliation of some kind with the church is not beneficial. So one of the other things that the chaplains and I were talking about was the, the presence of a Wesleyan identity on college campuses. And, and there was actually kind of a huge argument about this that I found rather interesting between chaplains, because I thought a huge argument would not be something that happened on that December day. But the, the discussion was, can we begin to talk about Wesleyanism as a framework for spirituality among college students? And I think there's some compelling reasons why we could do that. Part of the Wesleyan understanding is experience and tradition and reason. And these all fit quite nicely into the work of Otterbine University. The other part of that quadrilateral is scripture. And while we would not ever suggest that there's only one scripture that could be adhered to, I think the study of sacred texts could certainly be part of that quadrilateral for our students. We could come to Otterbine, just like you'd go to another university, and understand what Wesleyanism means without necessarily some kind of condition that you adhere to it or follow it, just as you go to some other universities or institutions and understand the tradition that they follow without any litmus test or rules that you also have to follow that way, like Jesuit College or Ignatian College. So I think there's some really compelling reasons to stay affiliated as a small liberal arts Christian progressive institution. It would be nice to show that Christianity is not all finger pointing and judgment, because that's what we see an awful lot of in, in our world today. It's 4:43. You're late, John.
I just, I really got to throw that up because you raised the question, not just, why shouldn't we, but what does it mean even, that we are in some sense the United Methodist church? And I think, I, I think it's, that's something I wish we would talk about more. And I guess one other thing I'd like to say, I think both for people in the Methodist Church and for Otterbine is in some way connected, I think there's a real conflict because here the church is doing something. And why do many people in the church object so much? Because of their Christian faith. The, the Christian faith is also their source of the objection to what this particular church is doing. I just think that's, that's kind of what tears people apart.
I think so too. And I think, I think this is a worthy conversation for groups, small and large, on this campus. And among people who are both people of faith and tradition and people who are skeptical of such things, I think values could be discussed in a, in a way that is not just centralized on whether or not people go to church on Sunday mornings, but about these values and what they mean. And I would, I would be highly in favor of those kinds of conversations as we kind of move through some of these decisions. Now this decision is ultimately made by the Board of Trustees. That's our highest decision-making body. But I do think that part of our identity as, as a, as an affiliated institution and whatever that means, whether it's an affiliated institution that is dissenting from the body, and again, there's no, there's no punitive action that the church could take against us because of the fact that we don't have those ties. So that may be a very strong position for us. I, I would be, I would really enjoy these conversations about what it means, not necessarily to try to override the trustees, but perhaps to guide the decision. And I, I think there's a lot of valuable things that we could discuss. There was another question over here or a statement? Anybody else?
I don't know what's going to happen to the kids that are getting these scholarships, their parents that are in Bible Methodist, if we should, are they going to lose those? Because they did them for four years.
Well, the scholarships come from us. So they don't come from a, a United Methodist. They're, and we could continue to say, based on our heritage and the fact that we have this, had this historic affiliation, that we will continue to honor the clergy of United Methodist, or the children of United Methodist clergy with this scholarship because we think that's valuable. So I think at this point, I don't think that there's any discussion about cutting people off, because this isn't really about the money, it's about the values. And part of our value is to bring students here and support them. So if anybody's scared about that, that is not something I've heard anybody discuss at all about taking away these scholarships. Any final statement?
Lots of them. It's interesting in the legislation that was passed because we briefly mentioned that there will become standardized penalties for clergy who choose to officiate same-gender weddings. Mind you, no clergy person has to do any wedding now or, or after this. Like, any old couple can come in and ask me to marry them and I can just say no, without reason. I don't have to give them, I can just think they're incompatible with each other and say no. So the standard, they're, they're hoping to institute minimum penalties because now, depending on the bishop, if, if a pastor is brought up on charges of officiating a same-gender wedding, a bishop might just say, I'm going to sentence you, Judy, to one day without pay and you need to send me a reflection letter of your experience. Like, who wouldn't take that? Day off, okay. But the standard penalties that are going to be instituted if Judicial Council upholds them is that if a pastor, a clergy person officiates a same-gender wedding, they will be suspended without pay for one year. And if they do it again, they will be, their credentials will be terminated. It becomes kind of problematic though, because like, we are in different appointment contexts. Judy is an, an extension minister. And so they could like suspend her credentials for a year, but Otterbine writes her checks. So... Yeah, but for me, that, it means a wildly different thing, because not only is my credential revoked, but then a congregation is being mandated in how to pay me or not pay me, as the case may be.
And what if the congregation continues to pay?
Then they would likely lose support of an annual conference as far as having a pastor supplied to them.
Want to say something about the trust clause?
Do I want to say something about?
Well, will you say something about the trust clause?
What a beautiful thing to have be my last words for you all. So the, the trust, there's a thing called the trust clause, which basically says that no church owns its own property. The property of a congregation belongs to the annual conference in which the church is located. So I serve as senior pastor at Church of the Master. If Church of the Master decides to leave, which they're not, for the record, right now, there's no, this is all hypothetical. The congregation can disaffiliate with, with the United Methodist Church, but technically, the building and the land then become property of West Ohio Conference, because they already are. And, you know, there's a lot of gray area when church law then is enforced by US law. The trust clause has never, ever been overturned by US government. It is always upheld. Like, for whatever reason, the trust clause stands in US government. So one of the pieces of, of the disaffiliation legislations are, if a congregation leaves, do they get to take their building with them? And essentially, there, there becomes instituted a, a leaving tax. And even after you pay the leaving tax, you don't necessarily get to take your building with you. That would then become up to the annual conference to decide. So there are things called apportionments, which, I hate this phrase, but it's basically a church tax where a local congregation is paying the dues to the, the levels above it. That's a way watered-down explanation. But if we would choose to withhold our apportionments to say that we dissent, if then we choose to disaffiliate, part of the disaffiliation formula, as far as money is concerned, is that a church will then have to pay back the apportionments that they have held. So you're starting to see congregations like King Avenue, down on Ohio State's campus, that are withholding their apportionments, but they are putting them in separate escrow accounts. So that when they choose to leave, because they have said when they choose to leave, when they choose to leave, they're going to get hit with this tax, but they've already set the money aside. They can just write a check and say, have a nice life.
The reason I wanted her to say something about the trust clause is, although this does not affect Otterbine, it does affect the whole conversation about new denominations, rising like a phoenix out of the ashes. It's not that simple. I have mentioned before, this has hit me really hard and I was not expecting that, because I was, I've been fighting this fight since I was ordained in 1995. I've been working on the side of people trying to get full inclusion for LGBT folk. I was prepared, I thought, for this. And this has been really devastating to me. So the conversations, while hopeful, I also know that there is an inherent complication in some of these discussions right now. So at this point, it is really difficult to see what's happening next. I still believe in resurrection. Perhaps that's the final word.
I, I need to excuse myself from the gathering, but I'll, I'll speak on behalf of both of us, that if you need pastoral support in processing any of this, as far as what it's doing to your heart and your spirit, please call us. We both hold sacred, safe space for any person and feel very confident in doing that. If you have questions about what this means for your own local church membership or exit from the denomination, I'm more than happy to speak with you about that. What I've been telling my folks is that... What I've been telling my folks is that if they choose to leave, because they can no longer in good conscience stay, I will send them with a blessing, I will help them find a congregation that is good for them. But for now, I am staying, because I believe that there's work for me to do to continue working towards change. I'm going to do that until I can't anymore, whether it's because the church doesn't make a place for me in it, or my heart can't take it anymore. But for now, I'm not leaving the United Methodist Church. So Judy will stay, I'm imagining, for a few more minutes to answer any questions, but she has my contact information and can share it with you. Please don't hesitate to reach out if I can help you process anything else.
Thanks. Thank you. My final word about why I'm staying, and I've told many people this, I have friends who have come out at great risk to themselves. Laura Young, Angie Cox, Jeff Mullenix, David Meredith, John Gerard. These are, these are pastors who are friends of mine, who I care very deeply about, who are out, some of them are married. They have a stake in this, and while they stay, I don't feel like I can leave with my cis-het privilege. My life is not complicated by this decision as theirs is. So as long as they stay, that's why I stay in the church. As soon as they think they can't stay anymore, I will have their backs on the way out. If you have any final questions for me, if you want to talk to me one-on-one, I'll be here for a few minutes. If there are questions that you have that you want to email me, I am happy to make sure that you have my email address so that you can contact me. And I will reaffirm what Anna said. I am happy to sit with anyone who is processing through this and trying to figure out what's next and what to do, because I know that this can be a, a very, very difficult time. So thank you very much for being here, thank you for your questions, and thank you for your continued interest in the future.